The regular city council meeting of the city of Orange City is in order for Tuesday, July 9th, 2024. Kaylee, do roll call, please.
Councilmember Stafford?
Here.
Councilmember Grimm?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Darmes?
Here.
Councilmember Pappella?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tiamson?
Here.
Mayor Blair?
Here. And our invocation tonight will be done by Alex Weiss, Director of Outreach from the Grace Baptist Church of DeBarry. And thank you, sir. Please, Vice.
Let's pray. Father, I do thank you for the privilege to be able to declare your name before these people. Father, for this great city of Orange City that, as I was speaking to one of the council members of that I've been born and raised in, and that she's been born and raised in. Father, our great need is of you. Father, you're the one that gives the establishment of government. You're the one that gives wisdom to those who lead. Father, and I do ask you for many blessings upon these people as they volunteer their time and their talents, Father, so that the people of Orange City can be the recipients of the benefits of that. Father, I do want to lift up our law enforcement, Father, that you would guard and protect them. Father, the leadership that you give them wisdom and the safekeeping and the care of our law enforcement officers as they go out on a daily basis. Father, ask many blessings upon them, and that they would return home safely to their families. Father, ask for peace of mind and comfort in their hearts as they deal with many difficult and trying things. Father, I want to pray for our fire department and those who put themselves in harm's way for protection and for the safekeeping of our homes and our households and as we travel up and down the highways. Father, would you guard their hearts, Father, the things that they see as traumatic and stressful? Father, you're the God of peace, and I know that you can give that. Father, I pray for our EMS as they seek to assist what seems like a daily occurrence where they're running somebody to the hospital. Father, I want to pray for our staff members as they help to support these council members and guide them with advice, and they pull permits, and they deal with aggravating people. And, Father, I ask you that you give them peace in their hearts. Father, but the most important thing, and I've already mentioned it, and I've been mentioning it to you all day, is, Father, we need your presence. Father, we need to know that the God of heaven is in charge.
Yes.
Father, in our daily decisions, Father, we need to be seeking your counsel, not our own wisdom, but your wisdom. Father, I do pray for many blessings upon this hour, Father, and I ask for wisdom. Ask for many blessings, Father, and I do pray for these things. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number one, absences. We have none at this time. Item number two, presentations, proclamations, 2A, curb appeal awards, second quarter. Winners, Becky Mendez.
Write it.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Becky Mendez, Development Services Director. This is the second quarter, second quarter of 2024, her appeal. And it's nothing. It's nothing without pictures. We started the curb appeal program in 2012. We're accepting nominations for third quarter in appreciation of keeping Orange City beautiful. You're presented with this beautiful certificate, $50 gift card, yard sign is posted. They just got posted today and announced on our city website. So, the second quarter 2024. Is she here, town center? Oh, no. Okay. So, we don't, the residential people aren't here today, so I just brought the one up. She was coming, the manager. She was so, they're both very excited and very appreciative. This business just, it's been in Orange City since 2018 when we annexed it in. It's a very, it's an older building. These are the new owners, and this town center family practice came in, painted the whole outside. I don't know if you noticed it, just south of the racetrack on North Volusia. I think it looks great for an older building. I think they've done a lot of great work, and staff who votes for these things agreed. They just updated their sign as well. It was kind of looking a little dilapidated there, dilapidated there, but looks great, and we're glad to have them here and participating with their business in Orange City. So, thank you for keeping Orange City beautiful. And our second quarter residential winners are Jay and Kathy Grossman. We had a, we took a better picture today, as a matter of fact, and all of the crepe myrtles are blooming. So, was just a, it was an even better picture. Nicely manicured lawn, lots of pops of color, welcoming signs and cute little yard art. So, to Jay and Kathy Grossman. They're out of town, but we'll be dropping off their package to them when they come in, back into town on Monday. So, thank you.
They are, they constantly work on their yard, and I actually nominated them, but it was quite a while ago. I thought we forgot about them. But they're always working out there on their yard, so.
That's good.
Great. Thank you, Becky. Okay, item 2B, for year 24/2025 budget overview presentation by Devlin Moore.
Becky, may I please have the clicker?
Short presentation.
Oh, good.
Thank you. Good evening, Devlin Moore, Finance Director. This is the preliminary budget overview presentation for the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 budget. The purpose of this presentation is to, in advance of you setting the proposed millage rate, give you some information so that you can make an informed decision when you do so at the next council meeting. This is really just a 10,000-foot overview of the proposed budget as it's currently drafted, and I do inadvertently begin to speak Greek sometimes when I go through these numbers. So, if I start speaking Greek, raise your hand and, or throw something at me, and I'll correct that. So, it's been a busy budget process so far to date. In February, the city council held its strategic planning workshop. Then, on May 14th, there was a citizen budget input session, and then during the months of May and June, the departments held their individual budget presentations to go over what their budgetary needs were. Then, on June 27th, the property appraiser released the preliminary certification of taxable property values, which allowed us to finalize the projected avalorum revenue for next fiscal year. As I mentioned before, the intent of this presentation is to give you the information needed in order for you to set the proposed millage rate on July 23rd. It's a statutory requirement. Tonight's agenda is primarily focused on general fund. We'll touch on a couple of the other funds briefly, but it, we're focusing on general fund this evening. The agenda is to recap the current fiscal year 2024 budget, provide an overview of the preliminary FY25 budget that's currently being finalized, discuss future considerations for the general fund budget, and to examine taxable values and millage rates. The current fiscal year 2024 budget was balanced at the rolled-back rate of 7.1209. That represented a 7.4% decrease from the prior year's millage rate of 7.69. Orange City was one of two cities that was able to accomplish reaching rolled-back rate last fiscal year. The current budget maintains all existing service levels and programs. It provided for pay adjustments for all city employees. It funded four new positions, which included a police officer, a public works maintenance specialist, a fire training captain, and a utility field specialist. That's in addition to the school resource officer that was also approved later in late fiscal year 2023. The budget provided for funding for the sponsorships and contributions, and as of today, the amended budget includes $37.8 million in capital outlay across all funds. The projected fund balances for all funds are healthy. Here, you'll see the top fund balance is going to be the general fund at $10.8 million. This is projected as of 9:30 of this fiscal year. The facility construction fund has a projected fund balance of 7.9 million. The utility funds have a balance of 4.1 million. The utility funds comprise of the utility revenue fund, which is the fund that we receive the regular rate, you know, the water bills. That's where the revenue goes to. A renewal replacement fund, an alternate water fund, a water connection fee fund, and a wastewater connection fee fund. So, the combination of the, all of those funds is 4.1 million. Impact fee funds total 1.5 million. That includes $490,000 in the fire department, $467,000 in transportation, $379,000 in culture recreation, and $159,000 in the police department. It's important to note that these funds can only use, be used for capital costs associated with new development and growth. So, it is statutory, statutorily restricted. The stormwater enterprise fund has a projected fund balance of 794,000. The special revenue funds have a balance of 316,000. So, real quickly, go through what your special revenue funds are. You have the tree bank fund, which has a balance of 215,000. The solid waste fund with a balance of 47,000. A forfeiture fund with a balance of 32,000. The building safety fund with 20,000, and in the street lighting special assessment districts have $2,300. Then, you have also the CRA fund, which has a projected fund balance of 59,000. What this slide shows is the major funds and the adopted budget for the current fiscal year, the amended budget for the current fiscal year, and then the requested budget for next fiscal year. The reason why we display this is to give you an apple-to-apple perspective when looking at the increase from adopted to requested, because it's not fair to necessarily compare the requested budget to the amended budget, because the amended budget includes the carry forward of unspent project funds, as well as the amended budget. Here includes various grant funding that was appropriated during the year. So, if you look at, for instance, the general fund, the general fund adopted budget for the current year was approximately 16 million, and the requested budget is about 18 million. That increase is primarily attributed to a pretty significant increase in capital outlay for the Berry Fire Services, which is a pass-through cost for the city. The Berry Fire Services reimburse the city for those. A transfer to the stormwater fund, and the addition of some new positions, which we'll cover a little later in the presentation. The utilities revenue fund had a, really a slight increase, less than 2%. As you can see, the amended budget more than doubled the adopted budget, and that's not really uncommon when you have as many projects that are happening today. So, we're going to take a closer look at the utilities revenue fund. This really is actually the last slide that's not general fund related, but wanted to give you a heads up since this is the second-largest fund in the city. The utility revenue fund is balanced with no transfer in from fund balance, and in fact, there's $330,000 in unassigned funds that can be used to fund pay raises within this fund, or it can be set aside for future fund balance. The proposed budget for the utilities revenue fund and the general fund, both of these do not include any raises to city staff. The budget pretty much captured everything that the department requested. I actually, I can't think of anything that was cut during the budget process. It includes the reclassification of existing utility field specialist position to a utility locator. It funds a new lift station mechanic position, and funds a GIS intern. It provides $875,000 in capital outlay across all the enterprise funds, and it provides for a $341,000 transfer to the renewal replacement fund, which is basically a bank where we pot money for large future capital outlay related to the water utility and the wastewater utility. Similarly, this is a snapshot of the general fund. A few things to point out here. Advalorum, based on the proposed millage rate of 6.9899, has a projected increase of 646, 647,000. The other revenues, it indicates a decrease of 948,000. That's because the current amended budget includes 1.3 million in LAP funding for the traffic circle on Rhode Island. So, once you back out that 1.3 million, you actually see an increase of more like, you know, $350,000. The general fund is balanced with no transfer in from fund balance and sets aside $91,570, which we currently list as unassigned, and those funds could be committed during the budget workshop when council gives us direction on what they'd like to see added or deleted from the budget. The proposed budget for the general fund also includes a $145,000 transfer to the stormwater fund. Unfortunately, that transfer is required because the revenues in that particular fund do not cover the projected expenditure. Now, we're going to deep dive into the general fund. First, I'm going to start with this meme. You know, I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing me talk about inflation, but we continue to see it largely offset the revenue growth. This morning, I pulled some numbers. I was curious and wanted to know what kind of inflation we could see as a city. So, I looked at the Federal Highway Administration. The cost of road construction since 2020 has increased by 59%.
Oh, my gosh.
According to a report from the Deloitte Research Center, the cost to construct a non-residential building since 2020 has increased 40%. Construction machinery and equipment has increased by 26%, and concrete products, including concrete, raw concrete, has increased by 32% since 2020. And lastly, I was curious how much the cost of a fire truck has increased. I found a news article. In between 2018 and 2022, fire trucks had, they determined, fire trucks had increased by 49% within that timeframe. And in fact, we received, the fire department received a quote for the fire trucks that they're proposing, and in the quote, they indicate if we do not purchase this truck this year, we can expect to pay an additional 7% next year. So, looks like a seven, seven year, or 7% year over year increase. So, some revenue assumptions. As I mentioned before, this budget is balanced with a reduced millage rate of 6.9899. It is a slight reduction to the current rate of 7.1209. You saw that there was a 9% increase in advalorum revenue. That is primarily attributed to market-driven housing construction, new houses and house resales, where folks don't necessarily have the portability of their saver homes. You know, people from other states purchasing houses here in the city, they don't, they don't have that portability from an existing house, so that house price reset. So, that's the primary factors for that 9% increase. The budget includes a projected $500,000 in interest earnings. Currently, we have $30 million in investments. Current rate is about 5.4%. Rates continue to be historic. Don't foresee that being a long-term thing. It depends on how CPI comes in and what the feds decide to do with interest rates. So, this isn't necessarily considered recurring revenue, but we, staff feels confident that we could at least get 500,000 next year. So, we plop that in the budget. You know, interest rates are driven by both account balances. So, as we spend down those funds for the construction of new buildings, the interest earnings will decrease. And of course, as I said before, interest rates are going to fluctuate. There is a 6% increase in all other recurring revenues. Recurring revenues include things like electric utility tax, paramutual tax, state sales tax, communication tax, all that good stuff. And as I said before, there is no transfer in from fund balance. As relates to personnel, the proposed budget includes three new positions, a human resources generalist for HR, a senior procurement analyst for finance, and both of those positions will support the city holistically, all city staff, and then the executive assistant for public works. The first two are prorated nine months, so they, funding would essentially start January 1. That's reasonable, given that we'd have to post a job, do the interviews and the holidays, all that. So, didn't make sense to fund the full 12 months. The executive assistant, staff recommends prorating that six months, so the funding begins in April. The reason for that is you're going to be getting a new public services director, and you'll probably want to give them an opportunity to evaluate their department, get to know the staff, the functions, and they may come back and have a different recommendation on what they need for that position. And then, we have a reclass of one position, a police officer to a property and evidence specialist. This position would support the detectives tremendously, as well as the department as a whole, given that there are currently five vacancies and the department has not had full, has not had all police officer positions filled at one time since 2018. It seems like a proper thing to go ahead and fund something that can be filled and useful rather than continuing to fund a vacant position. Operating and transfers for the general fund, the proposed budget does maintain all current service levels and programs, so no cuts. It provides for sponsorships and contributions. It has 100,000 in contingency, so if anything comes up during the fiscal year, you can pull from that rather than fund balance. It does include an increase in property and liability insurance, but I expect that number to go down. In fact, we just got the proposal today, but haven't had an opportunity to look at it. It does include that transfer to stormwater fund and a transfer to the building safety fund of 98,000. We established the building safety fund in fiscal year 2023 to meet state reporting requirements. This doesn't necessarily indicate that the building department is losing money. It's not. It's just a balancing act, and in fact, at the end of the fiscal year, if it's not necessary to transfer those funds, we won't do that. Won't do so. All right, capital outlay. Capital program for next fiscal year is quite robust at 1.5 million. There's 657,000 budgeted for streets and sidewalks, 373,000 budgeted for fleet and apparatus. That includes five police vehicles and a pickup truck for the parks team. It includes 196,000 in public safety equipment. It includes 93,000 for public works and parks equipment, $80,000 for computer replacements, and 67,000, about 68,000 for facility improvements. That is for some exterior improvements to Alberta's cottage, as well as running a new water line to city hall and the clerk's office. There are still a few things pending. Union negotiations are pending. As I said before, we need to finalize the property liability premiums, the workers' comp premiums, and of course, whatever council may throw at us during the budget workshop. Never provided a slide to council like this before, but I think it tells a good story. So, what this is, is it's showing recurring revenue versus recurring expenditure. It is best practice not to fund recurring expenditure with non-recurring revenue. So, this is one of the benchmarks that we look at to make sure that the budget is sustainable. So, when you see here, what you see here is recurring revenues for next fiscal year is projected to be $18 million. Then, once you factor in all of the recurring expenditures, which total 17.1 million, there's a remaining recurring revenue available of $900,000. What does that mean? It means that you have $900,000 to address other considerations, other recurring needs that the council may deem appropriate. So, council may choose to reduce the millage rate further. Every tenth of a mill costs about $115,000. So, if you reduce the millage rate by a tenth, revenue is going to reduce by 115,000. You could provide pay adjustments for city employees. You can fund a neighborhood center or some other alternative. You can finance the replacement fire engine. That's asterisked because in a later slide, we also provide an option of paying cash for a fire engine. You can fund additional positions. You can fund other wants and needs, or you can add the money back to fund balance for future use, or you can use any combination of these things. Staff will bring a recommendation to you at the workshop, and then we'll be prepared to run scenarios, and as you throw things at us, we can, we can balance the budget live. So, speaking of those positions, these are the unfunded positions that did not make it into the proposed budget. It's never easy to defer requested positions, but funding positions do have an impact. It obligates future funds. So, there's a careful balancing act between adding new positions that are recurring and then addressing other things that may not necessarily be recurring. So, the positions that were requested were two police officers, an EMS captain, and staff assistant for the fire department, a maintenance specialist for streets and sidewalks, and a maintenance specialist for parks and recreation. The total recurring payroll for those positions is 470,000, and the total cost for first year with setup, less the units, the equipment that can be purchased with impact fees, is 415, I'm sorry, 615,000. Now, let's take a closer look at the general fund, fund balance. The projected fiscal year end fund balance is 10.8 million. As you may recall, the council adopted a fund balance policy earlier this year. Once you apply that policy to the proposed budget, it calls for a total minimum balance threshold of 4.9 million. So, those funds would be restricted for contingency and emergency relief, as well as budget stabilization. Once you back that out of the projected fund balance, the total fund balance, it leaves an unrestricted fund balance of 5.9 million. So, what can you do with that money? Well, you can pay cash for the replacement of fire engine 67, which is about $865,000. The benefit of paying cash right now for a fire engine is twofold. One, interest rates are high. So, we're going to be paying more for a truck than, you know, we really want to. Debt service is not a bad thing, but in this case, right now, financing a fire truck is probably not the best, best idea. Second, it frees up that recurring. So, if you decide to finance it, you're looking at about 120,000 a year in financing costs, which eats into that recurring available funding. So, you bite the bullet and just pay cash for it. You can transfer additional funds to the facility construction fund, build that pot up a little bit more in preparation for the construction of the various buildings that we need here at the city, and you can establish a reserve in the capital improvement fund. So, we have always had a capital improvement fund, but we've never established a reserve within that fund. And what that would do is provide funds for some things that we know are upcoming. The potential $1.3 million grant match that may be required for the Mill Lake and Industrial Drive flood mitigation project, the city hall parking lot and/or shuffleboard court rehabilitation, city hall interior renovations, or any other future capital needs. You could just park it there, and if something comes up in a few years, you can use it. Or any kind of, you can do any combination of these things, and we'll bring a recommendation to city council at the workshop. All right. So, this is where my Greek really starts to pick it. We're going to talk about millage rates and taxable values. So, this chart's providing you two data sets. The blue bars are providing you the average taxable value for single-family residential units over the last 10 years. The red lines indicating the millage rate that has been adopted over the last 10 years. So, let's talk about the taxable values. Fiscal year 2016, the average value of a single-family resident residential unit was only $48,000. Today, the average taxable value for the upcoming tax year is 1... Today, the average taxable value for the upcoming tax year is $135,000. That represents a 179% increase in home values over the last 10 years. And year over year, these increases are primarily driven by new construction. New houses that come on the market typically have higher property values than the existing housing stock. As goes for the millage rate, the millage rate in fiscal year 2016 was 7.45 mils. The highest point was in fiscal year 2018, when the millage rate was 8.0650. And again, staff's recommendation is 6.9899. There's a lot of information on this slide, but I'm hoping that we'll get through it. So this has two scenarios for how applying average taxable values and the millage rate when you're looking at the current year versus what's proposed for next year. And there's two scenarios here. The first one is houses that are not homesteaded. These typically are residential units that are second home, snowbirds, that don't have a primary address here in Florida. They don't qualify for the homestead exemption. And then the second scenario is going to be the homesteaded homes, which have a, which the Saver Homes has established a cap that limits the assessed annual increase of homestead properties to a 3% max. So we'll start with the non-homesteaded properties. As you can see, the average taxable value for the current year, the current tax year that we're in, was 124,415. For next year, it's projected to be 134,562, $62, which represents an increase of approximately 10,000 or 8.2%. For the current tax year, looking at the current taxable values with the current millage rate of 7.1209, the average taxes to the city is $886 a year or $74 a month. Fast forward to the proposed millage rate for the next tax year of 6.9899, the average taxes to the city would be $941 a year or $78 a month. That represents an increase of $55 a year or $4 a month. So the average taxable value, or average house would have a tax increase for Avalorum of $55, just for the city's portion of the taxes that are on our tax bill for that year. Now, applying the 3% cap for a homesteaded property, you'll notice that average taxable value for tax year 2024, next year, is only 128,147, which is an increase of $3,732. It's because we're applying that 3% home, Saver Homes cap. Average taxes for the current year with the current millage rate is $886 a year. Using the proposed millage rate of 6.9899, their taxes would be $896 a year, which represents a $10 a year increase or a dollar a month. Clear as mud? So what staff is going to recommend at the next council meeting, when you set the proposed millage rate, will be a millage of 6.9899. That does represent a 6.03% increase over the rolled back rate of 6.5926. The rolled back rate is the revenue neutral rate. It's the rate that would generate the same amount of revenue as the prior year. And that's what we were able to achieve, what you were able to achieve last year, for the current year. When you set the, when you set the proposed millage, you're setting the maximum. Going forward, when you adopt the final millage rate, you can always adopt less than what your proposed millage rate is. You can't go over. So if you adopt a millage rate of eight, and you decide you want to do six, you'll have that flexibility, but you can't go the other way. So historically, council has opted to select a millage rate a little higher to get some public participation. Some people come in and talk, and it also gives them the flexibility to go through the workshop process and figure out if there's some things that they really want to fund, and they may call for, you know, a slight increase or an increase in the millage rate. These will be the voting requirements. I won't go into detail with those right now, because we'll touch on those at the next meeting. Here is your summer agenda. So as I said, council will set the proposed millage rate at the next meeting on July 23. City council will receive their budget document before, on or before Wednesday, July 31. Then there are, according to the budget calendar, one-on-one meetings scheduled for the week of August 5. And then the budget calendar calls for a budget workshop on Monday, August 12. The reason why that has a star next to it and is red is because staff would like to propose a recommendation on changing that date and instead consolidating it with your council meeting that is scheduled for Tuesday, August 13. What staff is thinking is that you would have your budget workshop between 5:30 and 7:30, and then the regular council meeting would begin at 7:30. We have to advertise both those times. That's why we're locking it in. We don't want to willy-nilly it and say, you know, well, the council meeting will just start whenever we're done with the budget workshop. Is that something that the council's amenable to?
I think so. Is everybody good with that? Anybody opposed to it?
Get it all done one day.
Okay, great. Then, if necessary, there's an optional second budget workshop. Then in September, you have your first public hearing, and that is red, because the school board has finally released their hearing dates. And their hearing date is Tuesday, September 10. And per Florida statute, we cannot have our hearing on the same day as the county or the school. So we are forced to move that meeting. And staff recommends that it be moved to Monday, September 9. That would be your regular council meeting, as well as the public hearing. Is council okay with that?
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And then the second public hearing will be on Tuesday, September 24. So the proposed budget is quite robust in balancing inflation and the cost of people, the workforce and the capital needs and the personnel needs, all while trying not to increase the millage rate. So that's where we're at today. And we'll be providing you much more information and seeking direction during the budget workshop. And thereafter, you will receive a supplemental budget packet in your next Friday communication. It's going to have some additional detail outlining basically what we covered tonight, the actual list of capital that we're looking to purchase, a history of the positions added over the last 10 years, things like that. So, and if you're more than welcome to email the city manager's office if you want additional information to be provided, we'd be happy to do that for you. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Will we have that schedule sent to us as well?
Yes, it's going to be part of your packet.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
I just have a comment. I just want to say thank you. I know that you all worked really hard on this. I know it's very stressful for you all to do. And I think you really did a good job listening to the presentations and what the needs are so far. I know we're still going to, it's a working thing in progress, progress, but thank you.
It is a team effort, without a doubt.
Yep. Good job to your whole team. Devlin, great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Devlin.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item number three, citizens' comments. I don't have any pink slips up here. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on from that to item number four, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion? We got a second? Kaylee?
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Darnes?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes, and the consent agenda passes. Kaylee, I wish you were to put a few more on there. I've never, never seen so many on an agenda before. But you're all caught up now, right?
She's busy, yeah.
She is busy. She's doing a good job. Okay. Okay, so that passed? And we'll move on to item number five, ordinance's first reading. Ordinance, 5A ordinance number 679. Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance to City Council. City of Orange City, Florida annexing 3.1 acres, more or less, of certain real properties into the corporate limits of the City of Orange City, including all portions of the adjacent right-of-ways as described. Located immediately west of Interstate 4 with parcel ID numbers 801303080010, and 802400000080. Redefining the boundaries of the City of Orange City, providing for assignment of a council district, appealing ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with providing for severability in front of effective date.
Very good. Becky Mendez, you're up.
Deanie Mayor, City Council. This is a voluntary annexation request of 3.18 acres with the adjacent right-of-way included. It's, bill is already described to where it's located and the parcel numbers, thank you. It is, it adds to the 307-acre Duck Lake planned unit development rezoning that is currently under review in our office. I will go to this map, because that might help a little bit. So this is a zoom in on the 3.1 acre parcel. And it's got, it's an antiquated plat. This is called, the right-of-way is named Atlantic Drive. And there's little alleys and other 40 to 50-foot rights-of-way that bifurcate those parcels. It's a paper plat. The street is unopen. You can see, this is the Duck Lake plan. Attorney Mark Watts showed you that during his presentation of the CDD presentation a few weeks ago. And so this is Harley, this is Veterans Memorial Parkway. This is Harley Strickland, that dead ends now, and is basically a driveway into Home Depot parking lot. And it ends right there and turns to dirt, right? The plan is that the Duck Lake development would extend Harley Strickland. It would curve around I-4 and start heading north, and it aligns with this Atlantic Drive. That paper plat keeps going north up to Rhode Island, right? So this little green area on the plan is Harley Strickland extension and open space. I think that I've seen some plans out there that may call for a sign of some sort. But for the most part, the plan is calling it for, to remain open space. It's currently, has a urban low-intensity future land use designation in unincorporated county with a rural residential zoning. We would just, we would, at some point, if the property is annexed in, have to change the land use, a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment.
Becky, does that right-of-way go all the way up to Rhode Island?
It does indeed, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's, there's environmental constraints that it would probably have to be an elevated roadway at some point, or it would need to curve off and around. But that's for a project much farther down the road than this. This just kind of sets it up for when we're all gone. In hovercrafts, we won't need any.
Yeah, right, airboats.
So, you know, and again, this annexation request, if you, if you look at the larger scale of the city limits, you know, we have that hole, right, that is to the west of I-4. It is within our, our planning area, our comprehensive plan and the policies of the comp plan. We want to fill in those holes. So it is furthering, reducing that, if you will, an enclave, because the City of Deltona city limits go up to and include the roadway of I-4. The annexation procedure is, it's not complicated, but it is very specific on what you have to do to advertise. We are following all of those as required in Florida statute. And the annexation is compact and does not create an enclave. The statute requires, the voluntary annexation request is consistent with Florida statutes, Chapter 1, 71.044. The PUD review, again, is under review, and this property will be included in that application so that that can move forward. The tax revenue from the 3.18 acres is $7 a year.
Wow.
If you have any questions, I will.
Devlin's all smiles back there.
Don't spend it all on place.
That's right. Staff recommends the city council approve the annexation at first reading and second and final for August 13, following the proper notice as established in Florida statute.
Is that whole section unincorporated or just that northern part?
I don't think I have, it's probably.
It's unincorporated at the top, but does that mean that whole?
Yes.
Triangle?
Yes, all, all the way north to our city limits. I think in your staff, in the agenda item, is a better map that's zoomed out. I don't have.
An annexation request is the previous one.
Yes, that's true.
There's a map on the ball, Becky, that.
Yes. Thank you, Mark.
Vanna Wade over there.
There you go.
Looking for a job?
She's kind of aging out, right? I have a question.
Go ahead.
So just to be clear, the, this is an annexation for the property because it fits within our comprehensive plan, but it does not include the PUD that's in the future coming to us, right? We're not voting on that tonight, right?
Correct. By allowing the annexation for the property to be annexed, it simply allows the rezoning request to be processed. Or they would have to revise the entire plan and take out these 3.8, 3.18 acres. So, correct. Approving the annexation does nothing about the review criteria for the rezoning. That will come later in an advertised, separate advertised public meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
Just to put a finer point on that. What we have tonight is really almost a checklist on a statute for this annexation. What we don't have tonight is a request for a development order to amend our comprehensive plan. We're not doing that tonight.
Okay.
What we're not doing tonight is amending your zoning map or rezoning.
I just wanted to make sure of that, because she had mentioned it.
We're not doing a site plan tonight. All we're doing is determining, making findings, whether or not, and it's, these are the key things in your last two whereas's in the ordinance number 679. To comply with the Florida statutes, we just have to find that this property is contiguous and abuts the city, current city limits. That is reasonably compact, means it doesn't have like a finger extending away from the city limits, and it's, this one does not meet that. And it does not create an enclave. And to the contrary, this reduces an enclave. So if you move for this ordinance and vote for it, then you're making those findings a fact, and this will be a legal annexation into the City of Orange City for future consideration of the above-mentioned development orders.
Thank you.
I think it's important that we do it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, even though it's important that we do it, and I understand you say it's not going to be part of our site plan at this time, but we should note that even for the residents, we would like them to know that don't mean that it's automatically, when they bring the site plan in, that we're going to accept what they put on their site plan, right?
Yeah, well, they know that. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we just said.
I just want to make sure, because people are asking, because they're, they want smart growth in our city.
So, and I wasn't here for the June 11 presentation, but I did look over the site plans, and I read over them, and I got questions. And we'll have many, many opportunities to talk about the site plan in a public meeting. There'll be advertised public meetings for the legislative action, which is your comp plan amendment. There'll be advertised public hearings for adoption of the rezoning ordinance, where there'll be two public hearings. And then there'll be your site plan, which will come to this council for consideration. So we're going from, if you will, really high to really low as far as level of detail. This is just a preliminary threshold step so that you can start talking about with the neighborhood, with the residents, as well as with the development team, about what's the best thing for our city and for this development.
Yeah, because right now, it's in the county's hands, right? Nobody can do a PUD unless somebody does that. Nobody can do a PUD unless somebody does that, right? I mean, as far as annexation with us.
You, you could still do a PUD, but you would not be able to take Harley as, as, you know, onto that three acre parcel without a lot of coordination with the county and it, you know, it, I think is intended to be a city road, so.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Action?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number six seven nine at first reading and schedule second and final reading for August thirteenth, 2024, after a proper notice.
A second.
A motion, got a second? Any, before we do this, anyone from the public want to speak to this? Okay, seeing none. Mark, you don't want to say anything, you're good. Less is more, right?
He pointed at the map.
Pointed out the map, what more do you want from that guy?
That's right, yeah, he's earned his pay tonight. Okay, so we got a motion, we got a second, no further discussion. Kaylee?
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tjonsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes, an ordinance six seven nine passes on the first reading. Let's move on to item number five B, ordinance number six eight two. Mr. Reichman, you read that one, please?
Mayor, this is an ordinance, City Council of the City of Orange City, Florida, updating the five year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years twenty three, twenty four through twenty twenty seven, twenty eight, repealing ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with providing for severability in for an effective date.
Becky Mendez, you're up again.
We do this five year CIP update every year, couple of months behind schedule, so this is starting fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, so next year we'll be at twenty four, twenty five, right? That's how that works, okay. We are required, another Florida statute requirement, we're required to adopt annually by ordinance, your capacity improvement projects for the five years. All the projects listed in year one are funded, projects listed in years two through five are unfunded, but it's the plan to move through to make sure that we are meeting level of service standard on capacity related facilities. So while Devlin and the city manager do a great budget line item of all types of things, we only report in our annual five year CIP update, the capacity, the improvements that add capacity and help us maintain the level of service. Just to get to the punchline, we do have current capacity to serve existing and planned populations to our planning horizon year 2035. Our population as of Bieber Bureau of, Dale, can I help you with that?
Economic and business research.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is fourteen thousand three hundred thirteen, where we should be getting, probably in September, we'll get the twenty twenty four figures. The Schimberg Institute projects out into future years, year twenty thirty five, we're estimated to have seventeen thousand eight hundred persons in Orange City. So our first capacity or first concurrency facility is portable water, potable water, sorry. Our level of service is 300 gallons per day, per equivalent residential unit or ERU. The city has four treatment plants and ten wells. The ADD is short for average daily demand is 1.7 million gallons per day, which is a reduction from last year. I talked to Magdalia on the phone earlier today about something unrelated, but I was looking through the PowerPoint and, and she, they, you have reduced your average daily demand almost every year for the last four years. And how are you doing that, accomplishing that? You've been increasing reclaimed water service to areas. The subdivisions that are coming in are smaller lots, less potable water for, for irrigate, irrigating those lawns, and if they are being irrigated, it's by reclaimed water. And those multifamily uses also don't use 300 gallons per day, per ERU, right? So, and with all of the pipe repair, a lot of the potable water, just because of the pipes are broken, just leaches back into the ground. So all of the infrastructure improvements that you're doing, not capacity improvements, but all of those pipe repairs are absolutely helping reduce the average daily demand, which is really what it's all about in water conservation, right? So we're definitely, the numbers don't lie. You're doing, the city council is doing great things and the Public Services Department has a great plan that, and you guys are working that plan very well. We have a consumptive use permit allocation of 2.5 million gallons per day, which is clearly, we're well below that. Also wanted, we, we are on a temporary consumptive use permit. We've been extending that every year since 2018 and while Magdalia and the city council works through those plans and resumitals to the St. John's River Water Management District, but we're in great shape and under our current cup, we have enough water allocated to Orange City to get us through our planning horizon. So we have on, in the five year CIP, you have more reclaimed water expansion. The green sands filter at the main water plant isn't really a capacity improvement, it's more of a water quality improvement, but still we, it was a big price tag, right? So we're definitely putting it on there and we've been doing alternative water supply planning with the consultant. Sanitary sewer level of service is 284 gallons per day, per ERU. We do not have a water, wastewater treatment plant, those are the county. We pay our impact, a portion of our impact fees that we collect to Volusia County for the plant and then we keep the other half for the distribution. So a lot of the pipes are city owned and maintained, but the plants are owned and maintained by the county. The county has sufficient capacity to serve our planned populations and the septic to sewer plan, Magdalia's up here every meeting, so you know she's working that plan. Solid waste, again, we don't control the Timoca landfill, but our level of service in our comprehensive plan is six pounds per day, per capita. The facility has a closure date expectancy to April 2028, but they have funded an expansion area that will take it to March 2029 and there's few, there are cells that can be developed into the future. They maintain that Timoca Farms Road facility very well. Stormwater, we have, we really meet our level of service standard for stormwater because all new development has to meet our land development code requirements and design criteria for, for ponds for new development. So really, most of the stormwater issues that we experience are due to aging infrastructure and development. The city's been a city since 1882 and they weren't really building a lot of stormwater ponds when they developed Orange City, especially in the, in the main town. So that's where we're, that's where we struggle to retrofit. We've got quite, the purchase of the borrow pit just happened within the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, so we've included that, but that is complete, that will help quite a bit. The Mill Lake pump upgrade, as you, as you know, is an ongoing monitoring issue for public services. And of course, the East Graves Basin study, we saw the impact of Hurricane Ian had on that East Graves Basin and so public services is in the design phase and study, preliminary study to see what needs to be done to increase the capacity. Here's everybody's favorite for public schools. The, the city and all of the jurisdictions in Volusia County entered into an interlocal service agreement for public school planning in 2007. And we established the, all of the cities and the school, Volusia County School District staff established a level of service for elementary, middle, and high schools. Elementary and middle schools are based off of 115% of permanent student capacity. That does not include portables because you're like, how can you have 115, if you've only got 50 seats in the school, how can you possibly be at 115% capacity and meet level of service? The portables don't count towards your permanent student capacity. So those kid, those extra kids are, hold school and are taught in portable classrooms so that you generate enough students to justify building a whole new school with a whole another 800 student population. Manatee Cove Elementary has a permanent capacity of 774 students and their enrollment was at 802. So their utilization is at 104, so it meets level of service. We also, on a yearly, bi-annual basis, we meet with schools district staff and we go over what the projects are. That interlocal agreement requires Duck Lake Planned Unit Development rezoning at the rezoning stage to submit a capacity report to the school and they do an analysis and they say, yes, there's capacity or not because we reserve seats on, with those forms, not at a rezoning level. We start to analyze it at rezoning. When it comes in for site plan and a shovel is going to be put in the ground and a house is actually going to be constructed, is when they reserve those seats. So we also look at a reserved utilization. We take those projects, those, those kids don't exist yet, but we know they're coming because we've issued a site plan development order. So with the reserved, even with the reserved capacity, all of the schools in Orange City that our students go to meet level of service, with the exception of Orange City Elementary. We've always known, and it's right over, with the reserved capacity or reserved utilization, it's 1% over the level of service. And there's a 20, the school district has funded 21 million dollar capacity improvement, adding new schools at Orange City Elementary and it's under construction now. So you get to count that as meeting level of service. They hadn't started construction when I was here before you this time last year and they get three years to, to complete that and still meet level of service. The Orange City Elementary, I will tell you, it has a permanent capacity right now of 539 seats. It will, with the improvement, it will go up to 750. A high school level of service is much different. It's based more on a planning area, not just an intended zone like elementary and middle school is because the high schools serve such a larger geographic area and it goes up to 120% because they are wildly expen, the high schools are wildly expensive to construct and maintain, as our mayor made it. Park and Rec, we are well over our level of service and we always have been because our land development code has a very strong requirement for new developments coming in, providing their own neighborhood parks. But even with that, the community parks that the city has opened and developed for the public far exceeds what our, what our level of service standard is. With that said, the city council just recently adopted the Park and Recreation Master Plan. The priority project was for the, looking at the design and improvement to Valentine Park. So that was really the focus of the Park and Rec Master Plan was to focus on improving our recreational programs and facilities that we have instead of going out and developing new ones. Everybody's second favorite behind school planning is transportation planning. The capacity, the, the level of service for roads, we, we only look at the level of service of thoroughfares. The majority of the thoroughfares are either state, I four and four seventy two and seventeen ninety two owned and maintained, or the county. Veterans Memorial Parkway, Saxon, Enterprise, those are all county thoroughfares. The city thoroughfares include the east portion of Rhode Island, not the portion of Rhode Island that goes out by the schools, that's county, but the middle section and Levitt and Rhode Island to Veterans Memorial Parkway are a city thoroughfare. So there are four areas in the city that fail and we've known them for quite a bit, quite a while, is the Graves segment, East Graves segment between Kentucky, Veterans Memorial Parkway to Kentucky. The county has just recently improved that segment and added that third, third lane and it was completed just a few months ago. So they have addressed that issue. That segment will also improve with the extension of Veterans Memorial Parkway. It'll take, it'll relieve that almost entirely and will just really be to local traffic. The Veterans Memorial Parkway segment from Harley to Rhode Island, which is right in front of Park Hill Community, is under construction right now. So Park Hill development, city council approved, I want to say in 2018, the proportionate share agreement for the Park Hill PUD rezoning. And in that, they had to widen Veterans Memorial Parkway to four lanes in certain sections. They went to almost where Hospice is, just north of Rhode Island and now, and they designed the rest of it to Rhode Island. The county partnered, pipelined all of our prop fair share payments and some of the traffic, transportation impact fees to pipeline and get the rest of it up to Rhode Island constructed and widened. That's under construction right now. The Rhode Island and Levitt intersection fails and the roundabout construction that we've talked about quite a bit will be, is fully funded for construction and construction should start in September. I four Seminole to State Road four seventy two, that's just a little segment of I four in Orange City. The FDOT has funded adding some lanes and they're in a design phase right now. As we all know, the beyond the ultimate program is hanging out there unfunded in Volusia County. The county also has funded the widening from Rhode Island then north to Graves and then also the extension from Graves up to four seventy two. Not included as a capacity, necessarily a capacity improvement, but it is a safety improvement. We like to report is the Enterprise intersection at seventeen ninety two, particularly eliminate, particularly eliminating this merge lane, which is a heavy crash site as people try to maneuver and merge into uncommon traffic. So that will be eliminated in its entirety and it will be two lanes that will come up to the signal here, so be much safer. And it will actually improve capacity and oper, the operational function of the intersection, but there's not a actual trip capacity assigned, increase assigned to it, but want to call it out. The CRA also paid, paid to paint the mast arms. We were going to get just plain old ugly silver, you'll get nice shiny semi gloss black ones.
You said there's two lanes?
Yes.
That showed three, right? A turn lane to Debarian and two?
Yes, I, yes.
Okay, so there's actually?
It's dual, it's dual rights and one left, so you're right.
That's what I thought, thank you.
It is three lanes. And then, of course, the West French Avenue Shared Use Path Construction is funded and we've been in communication with FDOT staff and we will be probably submitting those plans once the roundabout is notice to proceed is issued and we're under construction, we'll start the process all over, but with the French, West French Avenue path, which buying the borrow pit suddenly made that much, much easier.
Yes.
We don't have to have agreements with other people, other property owners. Staff recommends that City Council approve ordinance six eighty two at first reading, schedule second and final reading for July 23rd.
Any questions or comments for Becky? Anyone from the public want to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept ordinance number six eighty two at the first reading.
Second.
Motion, got a second? Kaylee?
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Councilmember Papello?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tjonsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham? Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes. And ordinance number six eighty-two passes. Let's move on to item number six, public hearing ordinances, second read and final reading. Have none at this time. Item number seven, resolution seven A, resolution number three two six two four. Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution of the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, admitting the pay plan for the city of Orange City, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict with providing for severability in front of effective date.
Jeremy Wiggins, you're up.
Good evening, city council. Jeremy Wiggins, human resources and risk management administrator. The basis for this action tonight, we had a member of staff come to us and asked if their position evaluated and insurance placement on the city pay plans was appropriate. We conducted a position analysis or a desk audit, if you will, to determine if the placement was proper. And we found that the reasons that they cited did in fact not only have merit, but justified reclassification on the pay scale to align with department calls and operation. And at such time, staff recommends the city council to approve resolution three two six dash two four.
All right, any questions, comments for Jeremy? Anyone from the public want to speak to this? Seeing none, back to council for action.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, let me see here.
Three two six two four?
Thank you, to accept a resolution three two six dash two four.
A second.
Got a motion, got a second? Kaylee?
Councilmember Papello?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tjonsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Mayor Blair?
Yes. And resolution three two six two four passes. Let's move on to item number eight, discussion and action, eight A, consideration of sponsorship request. Orange City Cirrhosis Club request for an in-kind services. And Maddy McAllister?
Good evening. So the Orange City Cirrhosis Club, this is going to be in reference to an in-kind service request for the Summer Splash Bash event. This event in itself was approved previously last year during the sponsorship overall request that goes to council between July and August. So this evening, we're only going to be discussing the in-kind service request. The event is going to be held on August third, twenty twenty-four. Previously last year, they were approved, the Cirrhosis Club was approved to either use Veterans Memorial Park or Valentine Park. Initially, they were going to be using Valentine Park on West French. That park does not require the use of park staff. With the change going to Veterans Park, Veterans Park does require two park staff. So their special events permit was turned in on June tw, uh, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, putting them in good standing. The event is scheduled from nine AM to one PM. The park staff is required to be on, on premise two hours before and two hours after. So that means staff requirement is from seven AM to three PM. For two hours for setup and two hours for breakdown. That's a total of eight hours. The sponsorship committee convened and they filled out their scorecard. Their overall score was a hundred and fifteen out of a hundred and twenty-five. A weighted score of ninety-one percent alignment with the strategic plan. And the request again was for two parks and rec staff for the August third Splash Bash event. For seven AM to three PM, a total of eight hours. The sponsorship committee recommends the approval of this request. And the discussion this evening is for council to decide if they want to approve the request of in-kind services, partial approve or denial.
Anyone have any questions or?
Can I just ask why they changed it, the location? Was there a reason?
Uh, they ended up doing a prior event at Veterans Memorial opposed to Valentine. And the increase of traffic just pulled a lot more people in. So I can't remember which event it was, but it was recent.
I'm just questioning the in-kind because I know that they already get five thousand dollars on the budget item line. So why couldn't they use that for the in-kind, the, the services? It seems like three hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents is nothing out of five thousand.
So I think initially, they just didn't write in the, there's a portion where it just says which in-kind services. I think they just forgot to write it in was what ended up happening. So it just ends up being, and like I said, normally this event is hosted at Valentine instead of Veterans. So when they switched it and we said, hey, you need to have the park staff, that's when this came up. But otherwise, I'm not.
So there wasn't any charge at Valentine?
Correct, because the park staff isn't required at Valentine.
Right.
So when you switch it to Veterans, that's when the two, two park staff are required.
But they already have five thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money. So what I'm saying is why can't they use that to pay for the services? It's not that much money.
You would need to ask them. I don't know if a representative is here.
That's the only reason I'm questioning, otherwise I would say, yeah, you know, but.
Is anyone here representing Cirrhosis? There's no, there's no one here.
I'm not representing, but.
Well, you've got to come speak in the mic, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Laurie Scotten and I am not here on behalf of the Cirrhosis Club tonight. But the reason that we did change it was just because we noticed that we did get more traffic of the Veterans than we did at Valentine. So that much I do know.
That makes sense.
Does anybody have any questions that can help?
I mean, I don't think that's in question. Absolutely, you're going to get more traffic there. So it's a successful move. But as far as the in-kind services, you're asking for, you know, we have to pay our people to work that. It's coming to three hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. So my question was, is we already gave you five thousand dollars for your events for the year. So why couldn't you use that?
So what do you want to do? Do you want to take the three hundred dollars out of the five thousand and call it square?
I don't want to do anything, I'm just asking you a question, it's not up to me. It's not up to me.
I mean, I don't, I don't understand like what to do if you've already given us that, if you already gave the club the five thousand. And now you're saying, well, but now there's three hundred and twenty-five dollars involved for paying the people to be there. What's the solution then? Do we just take that out of the five thousand and call it good?
Either or, that's an option.
You would need to pay us. This is how we would work it if, if council denied it for anyone coming.
Okay.
Um, since we have already given you the five thousand, I believe that has already been paid out in a lump sum to you.
Yeah, I believe so.
If you wanted to use the park and council denied your request for in-kind services, we could still do that, but you would need to write the city a check for three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
In order for us to provide the parks people there. At Veterans Park, the parks people are not optional. Because we have restroom facilities there that need to be tending. And it tends to be a bit crazier in terms of the amount of staff that is needed to keep everything going in that area. Whereas at Veterans, there was no request for staff people. And we generally have not provided them in the past when the event was held at Veterans Park. So.
Okay, no problem, I could take that back to the club and let them know. So are you guys going to decide tonight?
Yes, that, that is the intent, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, what do you want to do?
I just wanted to put it out there.
I think fiscally, they've got the five thousand dollars. It'd be, the responsible, sound decision for us to make is just to let them pay. Because they've gotten the five thousand dollars. That's, three hundred dollars is not a lot. They can pay for that, I think. And instead of taxpayers paying for it.
So I, okay. The reason I can't agree with that because we have other organizations that we do in-kind sponsorships to. The Cirrhosis Club have been with us for years and years and years. So, I mean, if you know the history of Orange City, you would know what the Cirrhosis Club does and what they, they are willing to do for the citizens of Orange City. And that's what's important, what are they doing for our citizens? And that's why, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with the three hundred and seventy-five dollars. I do understand, they gave them five thousand dollars. It had nothing to do with this in-kind service that we're, we're offering now. It has nothing to do with that. What it has to do with, it has nothing to do with it. Because they've given them the money, they were, hey, they came to us, we put them on the sponsorship list. I think of other organizations that come and ask for in-kind service and it's no problem. I don't see where it is for the, for the Cirrhosis Club because they are up, 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 uh, uh. How can I say it? They are really embedded into Orange City, they understand the history of Orange City. And they're there for the citizens of Orange City. So if our police department or anybody else has to do any service for them as an in-kind service for three hundred and seventy-five dollars, I don't see what it's to debate about. I'm sorry, that's just me.
Mr. Graham?
No, I'll pass.
You're good.
I'll go after him.
Alex, did you want to say something?
Yeah, it's just that, you know, we are ambassadors of our taxpayers' money. They've got five thousand dollars to use into whatever they need for their events. If their need is services from our staff, I see, I don't see why they can't, they can't pay for that with the five thousand dollars instead of giving, making the taxpayers pay three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five dollars more. That's all I'm saying. I mean, to me, it's an equitable and fair way to tell them, hey, you got five thousand dollars, go ahead and spend it on that if that's what you want to do it for.
I agree with that.
I agree.
I, I would like to explain, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So every year, we put forth a solicitation of special events and requests for services. And last year, when this came before you, there were, and, and we put it, put this out and then we gather all the information back. And we present it to you in conjunction with your budget workshops, usually in July. So in order to process this one that went before you, we processed it as an amendment. And the monetary rewards for, um, groups that are in your line item budget. These, the council in previous years decided to call recurring events. And because they had been funded for so many years, council gave them a special line item. And the recurring events were four. One of them was the Orange City Multicultural Heritage Festival, which received line item funding of two thousand five hundred dollars with in-kind requests of two police officers, fire department, truck and staff, park and recreation, and sanitation fees waived for the park. That was one of the line items. Another one is the School of Government, which got one thousand five hundred dollars. And then huge amounts of staff time for the city manager, public information officer, police chief, fire chief, city clerk, finance director, public works director, and other staff people to go teach these classes and conduct tours of the city. So they got the fifteen hundred dollars cash and all those services. For the Manatee Festival, it was five thousand dollars cash. And that's probably the one that cost us the biggest amount of staff time. They got two police officers, equipment protection at night. I mean, we have to stay out there twenty-four hours a day. Two EMS personnel, public works, park support, et cetera. So that's our most expensive event. On the Cirrhosis Club, it was haunted house, lunch with Santa, Operation Santa Easter egg hunt, and Summer Splash Bash. Their synopsis was the fees waived for all events at their building or city parks, the use of the fire truck for the Easter egg hunt, canned goods for Operation Santa. When, in trying to be very fair to people, when they came in and changed location, we noticed that they had not received approval of the in-kind services to be at Veterans Park because they had said they had not specified their location yet. It would either be at Valentine or at Veterans. And because it was our mistake, we put it through the process. So I just wanted to make it clear that in many instances, people are given both a cash amount and waiver of fees. So, you know, you know, I understand what you're saying that they, you know, this was an unexpected expense, but it is not that unusual.
If you're saying that we should do that based on precedent, then I have no problem with that. Because that's how we treated other entities, then I have no problem with that.
Mr. Mayor.
But what I'm saying is just equitably, I think the, the Cirrhosis Club along with the, the, the Manatee event, those are two that we keep giving money to every year. We don't, we don't, and then there are other, we don't deny them. There are other organizations that come up to us, we, we do deny them. So I'm just trying to keep it equitable and fair. But if we set a precedent where we, we have given both money and in-kind services to other organizations, so that, to be fair, I, I'm open to that, I'm open to letting them have both. If that's, if that's what you're trying to.
For all the non-recurring ones, we have a one thousand dollar upset limit. But they may also request, in addition to the one thousand dollars, they may request in-kind services. I didn't want you to think it was an either or proposition. And many times, we give both money and in-kind service.
That's why they come up here to ask. We, we, we need to make that decision. But I'm making a decision based on fairness and equitable means with regard to taxpayers and what we're, we're already giving them.
I, I get that. And I'm not trying to say what you're thinking was wrong. I'm not saying it was wrong. I'm just saying it, it is not an either or proposition in the way we've done things in the past.
Ms. Marks?
First, I want to say that I think everybody up here acknowledges what the Cirrhosis Club does for Orange City and appreciates it. So we're not questioning that. And because it was our mistake, I'm, I'm willing to flip what I said because we should definitely make good with that. My original thing was that if we're giving them five thousand and we're giving someone else fifteen hundred in, in kind, do the math, you know what I mean? Like, not everybody's getting that much, just a few people. So I was just trying to make it fair. And if they didn't know that, then, okay, I'm okay with it, you know what I mean? But it's just, like Alex said, we just got to keep an eye on our money here. We can't just keep handing it out, you know, because they change locations, but that's not the case here. So I'm okay with approving it.
All right, Ms. Darms?
In-kind expenses can get really high. As you know, with the Manatee Festival, that's our biggest one. And I want to say they get more than, and I'm saying this without checking the spreadsheet. They get at least in, in-kind services the same amount that they get cash.
And the, and the other thing I want to add on, sorry. The other thing I want to add on is this event is, I think it said in the agenda, it's about a hundred plus people. We're not talking a big event here. So, you know, when we consider all the events that were originally in the sponsorship packet, I think we need to take a, a better look at that in the future just because we need a breakdown. We want to know where our money's going, that's all.
Maybe they would be kind enough to take account of what is brought in.
All right, Ms. Darms?
My question is, when, when we provided the five thousand dollars, does that indicate what the usage of it is for?
That's what we just said.
Yes.
And, and does it say to cover in-kind services, to cover this, to cover that?
No.
No.
Maybe we should think about that.
Well, that would require a very specific line time. I, I agree, a very specific detailed budget of how you're going to spend that five thousand dollars.
That's right.
With our application package, we, you know, do require, and I didn't bring everybody, thank goodness, huh? You know, we, we require an annual budget submitted of how they're spending their funds. But that goes to the entire programming that an organization does, not just the dollar amount that we're giving for the event.
Okay, Alex, did you have?
Yeah, I, I just want to specify that I'm not taking away from one organization to the other. I think the, both the Manatee organization and also the Cirrhosis Club. I think the, both the Manatee organization and also the Cirrhosis Club, we hold near and dear to our hearts in Orange City because they do a lot for the city. So, and we, we, I don't want to say rubber stamp what they ask us for every year. We always give them what they want. They do give us a compelling reason why they need the money, but these are basically, these are the two that we give to all the time. And I'm just saying, you know, if, if they take into consideration also that we, we are giving them money all the time, that maybe they want to take part of that, and sometimes when things comes up, for them to go ahead and then absorb the, the cost and, you know, it's, it's good for us all, so it's good all the way around, I think.
All right, Ms. Stafford?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question of our city manager. Out of the Cirrhosis Club and the, and the Manatee Festival, do they ever bring you a check back as, once they have the events, to say, okay, we'd like to return to the city for their contributions, X, Y, Z amount of monies?
Not to the city of Orange City per se. And I can only speak, speak about the Manatee Club. I am not aware that the Cirrhosis Club provides checks to any of our organizations. The Manatee Festival provides checks to associated city organizations to include the DARE program, which is a drug education, I can't remember what the acronym stands for. A drug education program in middle schools. They fund all of our hard purchases that are associated with that. They gave money to, I believe, both our police and our fire cadets programs. The Cirrhosis Club, we don't market as a quid pro quo, but they have allowed us to have our staff Christmas party and.
Appreciation.
Appreciation, a couple of events at their, I'm looking for Jeremy, I don't, I think it is free of charge at their facility. So, you know, they have partnered with us on other things. I remember one year they wanted, and this is quite some time ago, they wanted to charge us for using their facility, and it was like, but we, we support you, you know, and they said, oh, you're right, you know, so.
Okay. All right, let's move on with this one. We beat it up pretty good.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion?
Yes.
To approve the Orange City Cirrhosis Club's request for in-kind services.
Is there a motion?
There is.
Got a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion passes. We'll move on to 8B, consideration of sponsorship requests. Volusia Volunteers in Medicine requests for monetary donation.
Okay, moving on with the Volusia Volunteers in Medicine. The Volusia Volunteers in Medicine is a nonprofit founded in 2015, located in Daytona Beach with a substation in New Smyrna Beach. Volusia Volunteers in Medicine is a nonprofit that offers free primary health care to low-income residents all over Volusia County. They are located in Daytona Beach, but they do offer the health care to Orange City residents as well. Orange City residents currently make up approximately 1% of their patient count. So when they came in for the sponsorship committee meeting, we did ask for a full number of how many patients, and they were unable to provide that, but they did, they were able to provide a percentage. That's where we came up with the 1%. We did fill out the strategic plan alignment scorecard. Their number was forty-eight out of one-twenty-five. Weighted percentage was forty-nine point six, so almost 50% alignment. The monetary donation, they are asking for the full one thousand dollar monetary donation for, like Ms. Arrington said, for the ones that are non-recurrent, the cap is one thousand dollars. The sponsorship committee recommendation is recommending denial of the request, just based on the fact that they are not located in Orange City and that the Orange City residents are only 1% at this current time. The discussion and action at this time is to see if the city council wants to recommend the full sponsorship fund, partial sponsorship, or no sponsorship.
So they, they don't do any mobile sites, visits over here, anything like that?
Is there anybody here to speak on it, or?
Yeah. Unlike the Cirrhosis Club, this does not, to me, meet my requirement to what, for what they do for Orange City, so our decision should be clear on this one.
Yeah, that's, I agree. Okay, so, action?
I'd like to make a motion.
Well, if we make a, if you don't make a motion, it'll die of like.
Oh, okay.
Of emotion.
I think it would be cleaner if you made a motion not to fund it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to not approve this request for sponsorship.
Got a motion, got a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion is denied. Or the, the motion passes, but.
The request.
For denial.
For denial.
So.
We got, you know what I mean.
You know, we're, we're just kicking off this season right now to get ready for your budget, and I want to say we're one of the few cities in Volusia County that is still doing this, and to my knowledge, the only one with the recurring line item appropriations.
Yeah.
So, most of the other cities have faded out over time on doing this.
Can I just come on that, that we, we are doing this, and that's a positive for our city? We're not a charity group. We, we have, we have to run our city physically soundly. So the, we're doing it, that, how we're doing it shows us to be, to, to what we're giving back to the community, uh, uh, in this regard, so I'd just like to recognize that.
I, I think that's good, and I think we've got good criteria, so.
All right. Okay, let's move, move on. We good?
Yes.
You good?
I'm fine.
Okay. 8C, discussion of the Live Local Act Land Development Code Administrative Text Amendment. Becky Mendez.
If you weren't tired enough of budget items and capital improvement plans.
It started, right?
We now get to get into zoning code amendments. I know. Live Local Act, this is an amendment to the Land Development Code for discussion and action. The highlights of the Live Local Act, it became effective on July 1st, 2023. The purpose of the act is to incentivize affordable housing, as that term is defined in the state law. And some of the bene, the ways that they incentivize affordable housing projects is to bypass the public hearing process, that all projects are approved administratively. They're at the tallest buildings, the highest floor area ratio, and the highest density allowed under the zoning code. And it's tax-free for thirty years. The qualified development, so to be classified as affordable housing, it must meet at least 40% of the unit's rent is affordable, as that term is defined. So I just, I broke it down as easily as it's simply because it's a really complicated formula, and there's a lot of variables. But in our, in this MSA, the average annual wage is forty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-four, as of the 2022 report is the best available information that we have, which would equate to approximately fourteen hundred and fifty-nine dollars of rent per month for apartments. And they are rental units. The affordable housing does not classify single-family residential home ownership as an affordable housing project. The city council approved the six-month moratorium on March 12th, 2024. So we've been working diligently ever since to get you some draft language for your consideration on how Orange City is going to address the preemption from the state. Not that providing affordable housing is not a great thing. We should all look towards and strive for that. I don't know that the state went about it the most perfectly way, but again, it's a, it's a, it's a good goal to have. So we are going to try to continue with our growth management ways and strategies to plan sustainable growth over time that we can manage in Orange City, right? So we had a picture of the zoning map and we had our citizen resident point out our boundaries. So every piece of property in Orange City has a zoning classification assigned to it. The map, the colors on the map mean something, and the intent of this amendment is to create an overlay zone that will layer on top of our existing zoning classifications. And they will apply to, this is a picture of the zoning map on, on the screen as well. It's not the entire city because it just doesn't fit that well. The, the Live Local overlay will apply to properties that are zoned CG1, which is general commercial one, which is a lighter colored red and primarily on the 1792 corridor. Also, the CG2, which is a little bit more intense commercial zoning classification, which is the brick red, again, on 1792 corridor, and there are large portions down on Enterprise Road, and there, and Saxon. So it goes down south, this is Enterprise. Saxon Boulevard has the CG2 zoning classification and CG1 intermittent between there. And it also applies to our industrial, which is the lavender color, the gel core, shaddock. You all are familiar with that, the industrial area, some property, some of the properties south in Rhode Island, where the roundabout is going, all of that is industrial zone property. The applicability of the state law is not applied to any of the MX2 or mixed-use zoning classification, MX1 or MX2, which is all of our primarily vacant land and very high density and intensity, and all of the projects in here have to be rezoned to a planned unit development. It does not, this statute does not apply to these properties because Orange City, they threw us a bone, that, thank you, City Attorney's Office uncovered for us. For small cities that have less than 20% of their total land area zoned commercial or industrial, so those zoning classifications that I just pointed out, if 20% or less of that land area is zoned commercial or industrial, then the Live Local Act does not apply to your, only applies to those two zoning types. Does not apply to the mixed-use area. So that's a good thing as far as, because trying to implement, we implement good growth management tools in our toolbox and the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code in that mixed-use area, because that area is very important to Orange City. It's strategically located by the interstate, major highway. So those are good areas that we want to develop well, and we do that by requiring that planned unit development. And those standards, if it had to be approved administratively, wouldn't exist for staff to be able to implement well. So this overlay would have been very large. It's been scaled back considerably. Again, only applies to commercial and industrial zoning classifications. It also does not apply to any of our existing planned unit developments, which are all of these blue boxes, because that is contract zoning, and the state, state lawmaker, legislature cannot override contract zoning. It also does not apply to office transitional, which is the light, light pink, really down in this historic downtown area, that zoning classification was primarily drafted to allow historic structures to have retail on the bottom and they can live upstairs, and really trying to encourage that, that traditional pattern. So that's primarily a historic district, so the, the act does not apply to those lands, nor does it apply to the commercial recreation, which I think the only zoning classification that, the only property we have assigned that is way down south on Saxon. So that's where the overlay applies. Now, what's in the overlay? The overlay establishes a mixed-use residential. So if, if an affordable housing project is going to come in under the Live Local Act, it has to be developed as a mixed-use residential project. Can't be just standalone 100% apartments. It has to be mixed-use because, again, that's the reason why the, the state lawmakers put in that 20% rule, because we're giving up commercial and industrial lands that are jobs and shopping and support uses, non-residential, for residential uses. So they've allowed the city the opportunity to create a mixed-use residential requirement. We didn't have to, but staff is recommending that we do, and that table is provided in the overlay. What also is drafted in the overlay, which is unique to this overlay district, is that that commercial has to be built concurrently with the residential. So of that seven hundred, eight hundred acres that is zoned mixed-use, that plant, we, we look at, we have a similar development mix table of multifamily, commercial, and office, and civic and open space. We have that same mix in our comprehensive plan, right? But it's, that mix is over the whole and entire seven hundred to eight hundred acres that is zoned mixed-use. It's not site-specific. What we're doing here with this mixed-use residential is that we're saying it is site-specific. You have to build the commercial with the residential. Does that make sense?
So, so what you're saying is, if, if we change it to these, the Live Local Act construction people cannot use this area now to build along their parameters of no taxes and all that?
Correct. It doesn't apply to those lands.
So do, do we reduce our inventory of regular industrial use zones that, that people, that companies may or should be able to use?
Well, they could, it, it's, there are vacant lands in the industrial zoning classification. So yes, you do give up, we're preempted from the state of Florida, so you have to allow that. So yes, but that is why they made that 20% rule. So it's not then applying to all of the mixed-use areas as well, right?
Let me, let me try to add to.
Sure.
I, I don't think it's correct to assume that because we're putting this overlay over commercial, industrial, that we're prohibiting commercial and industrial development.
Correct.
We're simply saying that in those commercial and industrial zoning districts, there's some special privileges to landowners or developers if they want to use those portions of our city for affordable housing. Doesn't mean they have to. It's not limited to affordable housing. It's actually just another use that has certain advantages to it, which are the substantive zoning preemptions that are in the Live Local Act, as well as procedural preemptions, which are contained in the, the statute. So a lot of what you, you have this evening in this draft is to try to create, let me say that again, try to fill some holes for the specifics and to take advantage of where there aren't preemptions. So we're creating a process, which I don't mean to steal your thunder, Becky, but we're creating a process, since we, since it's, since we can't use our regular rezoning, it has to be administrative, we're creating what that means now, and we're taking advantage of what we can regulate as far as substantive zoning applications.
That's a very important nuance, and thank you. If that, it may, may have been more to what his.
Yeah.
Councilmember T. Mson's question was. We're not, we're not saying that every vacant portion in commercial and industrial has to be an affordable housing project. They absolutely, the owners can absolutely come in and apply for the normal, and that's why we didn't create a whole new zoning classification. This is an overlay. So those industrial and commercial standards don't go away. They're not replaced by this overlay. The overlay just goes on top of it. The developer can take the advantage of that opportunity if, if they wish.
So, so a company can come in and still build in a.
Absolutely.
In, in the area that we designate as, as multi-use industrial. I understand, thank you.
Yep, exactly right. So it's a, it's a.
Gotcha.
Good point.
And the state didn't see that as a preempt on municipality's part and tried to.
No.
Outdo us?
No.
It might become a gun.
Please, please don't say anything out loud.
Right. Don't put that out there.
Always think out of the mouth.
You have many ideas.
I guess.
Poor.
Turn off my microphone.
Okay, I, I, when it comes to math, I'm always a little.
Uh-oh.
I get that one.
You get it.
I do.
The thing is, if, for. Um, the thing is, if, for, for affordable housing, and we see this thing that they're not going to have to pay taxes for 30 years. Now, I, my understanding is if they're going to be building businesses underneath and then the apartments are going to be on the top. So, the businesses are going to be paying taxes, but the people above them won't?
No.
The whole development, in the statute, the whole mixed-use affordable housing development will not have to pay ad valorem taxes for 30 years.
I want all my taxes back.
So, essentially, what, what, what this new legislation has done has decreased the, the value of your developable property that's in commercial, potentially, and industrial. And, and, which again, getting ahead, but and places an obligation, if, if you will, a mandate upon local governments to monitor such developments. And if you saw on your agenda packet, that's not an easy thing to do. So, there's going to be some expenses that will be probably, I think the intent is to pass them on to the developers for the cost of the monitoring services that will have to be done. And that is not an easy process because you've got to monitor what they're charging and then that amount can, that, you know, that, that amount basis is based upon a moving target, which is your income for the community. And I guess, I'm, I'm not sure how they're going to do it other than just go out there and talk to the owners of the commercial or the affordable housing properties and find out what they're charging. But that's, you know, that's, that's what we're going to have to do.
They're still going to be subject to be the necessity of perhaps, you know, having police protection, fire protection and all of that. And that gets paid by taxpayers and, and you know, that just, that just throws me off.
The, the good thing is, is that it is limited to commercial and industrial and doesn't include the 800 acres of the mixed-use area. So, it, that 20%, now, we're very close to that 20%. So, it will be, it will be on the planning department to continually to monitor that. So, the three acres that was annexed, it's going to have to have a, a city zoning classification assigned to it, right? So, um, we just have to be really aware that if we get rezoning requests in to change it to a CG1, CG2, an I1 or an I2 straight zoning, um, you know, we have to do that math. So, we just have to be, have to be diligent.
I just wanted to say thank you to you and your firm for finding these loopholes or whatever you want to call me, that's not the right word.
I take no credit whatsoever.
Okay, your wife, right?
Correct, okay, good.
But I want to say that.
That will get back to her.
A woman will get it done, I'm just saying now. No, I wanted to say thank you because I know it's been on all of our minds up here that we want to have smart development and things like that. And our hands have been tied. And I think that this um item here really covers keeping the developers accountable, right? Um, and also the um, you know, a little more control over industrial areas and things like that. So, I'm, I'm really happy about it and I, I thank you for that, so.
Well, please, and, and understand that Becky had worked very, very hard on this.
All of you, really.
And the hard, one of the hardest parts is that this is a brand-new law.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of things in here where we're charging the hill um because we're, we're out front. I think this legislation, these proposals are, are provocative and, and they're, they're imaginative and they are aggressive and they're for the best interest of the taxpayers of, of Orange City.
And it's going to continue because now she, her workload is going to be a little more now because she's got to monitor this stuff. So, thank you too, yeah.
You're welcome.
All right, Alex.
Just, I'm just want to state that I'm not to take, just wanted to state that not to take away from affordable housing because there, there's a definite need. But I think the essence of the statute is made for bigger municipalities, big cities like Orlando, Daytona. For a small city like us that looks after our residents to make sure that the rent isn't sky-high, I don't think this really applies to us, but they made a blanket issue. So, um, yeah, there's still a need for affordable housing, but I don't, I, I think the way they blanketed this issue to all the little small municipalities, we end up paying a lot for it. Uh, with regard to a, a service and infrastructure. But yeah, for Orlando, Daytona, where they have a lot of industrial areas, they're vast, they're not being used, yeah, use that. I mean, I, I see, I see the need for it, but I think that we, we kind of suffer as a small municipality.
Good points.
We do. Okay, action.
Um, no, I still, I still have.
Oh, you're not done?
Way more slides, that was the first slide.
Sorry.
You're in trouble, mayor.
So, the, for Live Local projects that are coming in the I1 or I2 zoning classification, you know, the I2, I1 and I2 doesn't allow multifamily uses, so it has no development standards whatsoever. Um, so we really, um, just for the projects, affordable housing projects that come in the industrial zoning, the overlay requires a 100-foot perimeter building setback all the way around. So, not in commercial and between commercial and, you know, apartment building and between apartment building. But the perimeter setback is 100 feet with a 50-foot perimeter landscape buffer. If it's not in industrial, if it's in CG1 or CG2, then it just follows what those guidelines already require. Reduce, the statute also um tells us that we have to consider reduction of parking in circumstances within, if it's within a quarter mile of a transit stop. So, VoTran in 2016, um, with the help through the TPO process, and there was a lot of collaboration, came up with a, a bunch of standards, transit standards, if you will. And there are requirements of what the VoTran pole will look like. If there's shelters and benches and trash receptacles, that's what these will look like. There's boarding and a lighting requirements. And if they're having boarding and a lighting, then they will, it will be designed this way. Bus pull-offs, anyways. Lot, lot goes into this manual that they adopted in 2016. So, in the overlay, it describes what a transit stop is. And at a minimum, it's not considered a transit stop, a bus stop, unless it has the VoTran pole and a boarding and a lighting pad that's paved. As you know, VoTran controls where the bus stops are and they can pick up a pole and they can move it at any time. And not all the time, it's got a pole there, but not all the time is there any other improvement. So, we're not going to consider it for the purposes of the city requiring a parking reduction, um, a transit stop unless, unless it's constructed to a minimum standard. Um, same thing with the ma, major transportation hub. The, the statute, if it's in a half-mile, they did define major transportation hub and they said such as major transit stations, but then you don't define what major transit station is. That VoTran guideline does, and so we just copied and pasted um the standard from VoTran into the overlay. So, there was no confusion when somebody came in and they were asking for reduced parking as well. This is the one that's, might be a little bit problematic for Orange City if it's within 600 feet of public on-street parking or parking lot. Um, we do have commercial, as you know, along this corridor. So, if a redevelopment project comes in somewhere around, you know, we've done on-street parking on Holly um and the parking lots, this is really the area of which we haven't had the most, so we would have to consider reduced parking. The statute further restricts us from requiring that the developer provide any additional public parking to offset that, but they're just allowed to use it for, for their benefit. Um, the TRC can otherwise modify parking based on a parking study. There are circumstances that administratively, we do reduce the minimum parking um standard if it's, um, it's usually based on use, internal trip capture, um, things like that. Um, all the other things that are in our zoning code that are either in the R3, which is our multifamily zoning classification, has standards. I needed, we needed to duplicate those into the overlay so that it can be considered in the commercial and industrial areas, um, as well as some of those mixed-use requirements. So, all the other stuff that's in the overlay is really just a copy and paste. Just picked it up out of the R2 zoning classification and popped it into the overlay. As an example, the access, what do you do with accessory uses and structures? What are their setbacks? We have a whole code section, so we just reference all those existing code sections. The minimum 15% land area for tree preservation is our chapter 11. So, we're not making up any new standards. We're just being clear that all of these mixed-use residential projects, all the other code sections apply. The overlay also requires the development agreement. As you know, with planned unit developments, we always had a development agreement that established unified control of the project, performance guarantees, utility arrangements, schedule of phases if applicable, um, a land use acreage calculation. This development agreement also has to have the covenants, easements and other restrictions for the affordability of the project. It has to have this 30-year affordability commitment statement. That's a very specific statement um drafted in the state law. That agreement will be their signatures and Dale Arrington, as the seat, as the city manager, will be signing that development agreement instead of the mayor, which would normally take place um in other circumstances. Um, it also will provide, that agreement will provide for that annual auditing and monitoring program and what that program looks like. We, the development agreement will make up the provisions for if they violate that. So, we monitor the program every year for affordability. And let's say the audit comes back and they have failed to maintain at least 40% of the units as affordable. What then? Well, we're going to have what, what then? So, is it, and we've been debating that, so that's, that's to come. We, we've come up with a couple of ideas, but.
Will that be an internal audit or will you have to hire someone to do that?
We are, we do not have the staff or the, or, that has the expertise in monitoring this. So, we will be hiring a consultant, hopefully through Devlin, either Devlin's Groups or, um, or we just go out as a sub with one of our other continuing services contracts. So, that is, is more to come. Um, there will be a fee schedule that will come along with, with the actual ordinance as well that will require an annual payment into this affordable housing fund of some sort so that we draw off of that, so the taxpayers aren't paying for that annual monitoring.
I'm reading that last line. Kaylee's head's in the way and it says, it looks like it says amen to the process. When you had your head there, I was like, what?
It is just an amendment process.
I know, now I see it, I don't just say it.
Because inevitably, there's always an amendment, right? So, you know, we go through all of this, or even with the PUDs, we're amending them all the time, fact, fact, you know, because once you, you know, devils in the details. And then the administrative review really will just follow everything that the TRC has to approve it with Dale Arrington as the city manager with the final authority. It just won't ever come here. We can report to you and let you know that we're approving these things.
Friday communication, maybe?
Friday communication, so we'll let you know if we get one and so you'll be in the, in the loop, but um will not require public hearing. Pending are these agreement templates. Katie and I have been drafting them, they're in some kind of form. I'm still kind of working our way through it. Um, and the guidelines and of course, how much we should be charged.
Becky, can I make a, a comment about why Tallahassee decided that the process for approval of affordable housing was going to be taken away from the public and their representatives, the elected officials, their governing body? And the way I understood it, Becky, you can correct me if you think I'm wrong, but the way I understood it is that it felt that there would be political pressure brought to bear on whenever someone comes to the city asking for development of affordable housing. Because to a lot of people, affording housing is like two dirty words. And so, when you, when you take that process and you move it to an administrative process, then they're arguably, or I'm sure they anticipate that there'll be less political pressure to bear. And they're, in addition to that, that type of development in these specific locations in Orange City is a matter of right, subject to all of the, the limitations that are placed upon this potential development, um, that are not preempted. And I would emphasize how much work it was for Becky to go through and try to catch all of the things that are in this ordinance that are not preempted. So, that hopefully, and, and like I said, you know, as time will tell, well, there may be some other things. But, but, you know, the, the product that you have before you and that we're going to ask you to authorize to bring back to you as an ordinance is, um, it's, it's going to contain as much as we possibly can to protect our industrial zones and our, and our, and commercial zones and, and our, our potential ad valorems.
And the adjacent land use, right?
Sure, sure. I mean, think about it, they're putting multifamily essentially in industrial areas. And telling us we can't restrict the height, we can't, we can't restrict the density. So, what we can, what can we do, we can still do setbacks. And so, we're, we're, we're dealing with those. We can't, we can't deal with floor area ratios. And all these other little technicalities that are currently in our land development code and our zoning code, and there's a reason why they're in there.
So, the staff proposal for the next step is to schedule the public hearings. Schedule is August 7th Planning Commission. It'll come back here to City Council for first reading August 27th, the second and final on September 24th to make it under our six-month moratorium deadline.
Good work.
So, after discussion, we just, we just need to give staff direction on this, right? There's no vote?
If you've been authorized advertising the ordinance for public hearing, it'll look very similar to this and it'll probably have a little.
So, do we need a head nod?
Head nod?
Head nod.
The consensus is fine, that's correct.
All those in favor?
Go for it.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor of Council, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item number nine, reports, city manager.
Yes, yes, sir. Got a little list here. Mr. TMS is the cause of this. He brought to my attentions a couple of his concerns and I thought it would be good to um share them with everyone. You know, one is, uh, Mr. TMS noted how, how much it had rained here last, last council meeting. And I wanted to, he experienced firsthand that we lost our pump on Industrial Drive that night and um many staff members, after you and I went home to bed, spent the night out on Industrial Drive. You know, trying to make sure that that road was open and passable in the morning. Their hard work succeeded. But um I do want you to know where we issued an emergency purchase order to um bring in additional uh pumping equipment that was not fried um so that we could be able to maintain this. So, we've got quite a good setup going there. You know, until we get grant funds or find alternatives to solve the problem, we've got quite a uh pumping system set up to go from the retention pond back up the hill to public works, um deposited in one pond and then pump it from there into an adjoining pond. So, we're working on that. We also um have been having a problem with Mill Lake Park. If you go out there, you can see that the water level is very, very high. Staff is, uh, your staff is putting together some specs to run a larger pump that can be used out there so that we draw that lake down. And the good news is, is that we got our, McDalia brought home our temporary permit for using the borrow pit today. So, um, you know, that is what has limited our ability to draw down the lake to below 16 feet because we can't pump anymore out to the St. John's River. Now, we can pump more. Um, and we're, we're going to need to bring in at least, uh, you know, a larger pump for a while to be able to affect that. In the meantime, we're trying to run it um overnight and we've spoken to the area of residents. Everyone's been accommodating. It's not real noisy, but a little bit. But I think well worth, you know, the alternative of water in the road or worse, um, you know, in houses or uh, every time it rains, the ratio is like three to one. So, we have a three-inch rain, we had a four-inch rain last council meeting and that brought a foot of water into Mill Lake Park. So, it, the ground is just saturated. So, um, on a more cheery note, um, staff reported today that. So, um, on a more cheery note, um, staff reported today that the, uh, water, the South, South Water Plant is running clear water, which is good news. We will continue to monitor every single day for the iron content and jump on it as quickly as possible. But, you know, hopefully, we're on top of the discolored solution or discolored problem that we've been having from the South Plant water. And, uh, everything should look clearer. If, if not, if someone still has, uh, orange-colored water at home, we advise them to run their outdoor spigots for a while. If it persists, they should give us a call and we will check it out. But, hopefully, we're coming to the end of that, and hopefully, we'll get the main water plant on. By the end of the month, we're almost through with the green sand filter training and shakedown. So, all good news. Yes, sir.
The pipe capacity will handle a larger generator, larger pump?
We know it will handle a mid-sized pump. So, I, I don't know the specifics of it. We're not going to bring in one that, we're not bringing in the highest-level pump. We're bringing in a mid-level pump, because I think we can, um, increase our current pumping rate, but not take it high enough to break that pipe. So, we're still in negotiations with FDOT to gain, um, control of that pipe. And, you know, or, or have a grant application, I believe, submitted for pipe, for building an additional pipe adjacent to that one. Is that correct, Kristy?
So, it won't be replacing, it'll just be another one?
Correct, right.
Well, when I left here the other night, my rain gauge said three and a half inches, and my bottom-floor garage was two or three inches of water in it. But I, I don't have gutters on that building right now, so it'll
So, so it's not just the amount of rain, it's the rate of rain
Yes.
that is, um, causing the problem. You know, there's a big difference between three inches over three days and three inches over two hours.
Weren't we wishing on rain for the fireworks, though?
I know.
I'm just saying.
I, I told Ronnie he needed to cancel our rain dances.
We got, we got what we wanted, just too much.
Correct.
Okay, was that it?
That's it, sir.
Any questions, comments for the city manager? If not, we will move on to the city clerk.
I have no report at this time.
Any questions, concerns for the city clerk? If not, we'll go to Mr. Reichman, city attorney.
Nothing more to say.
Anything for Mr. Reichman? You're off the hook, Bill.
Thank you.
Ten, new business, any new business? Seeing none, we'll move on from that. Approval of minutes, we did several of those. What did we count, 11 the other day?
I think so. I'm just happy they're caught up, that doesn't sound great.
I am too. You happy, Mr. Propeller, with that? Good.
Let's take it some time.
Okay.
I'm almost even done with tonight's.
You're almost done with tonight's, all right?
Been working.
Good, okay. Uh, anyone have any comments or anything? Ms. Marks, first?
I just want to say the fireworks and fun was fabulous, and thank the staff that put it together. This was my first year judging the watermelon eating contest, and that was a lot of fun, and I actually ate some watermelon, so it was good. So, I appreciate that, it just, it makes it feel like that hometown, small-town thing, you know? So, keep that, please, I loved it. Um, and then, uh, we attended the ribbon-cutting at Jade Serenity Spa on May Street, which was pretty cool, we saw some other council members there, and, uh, met the former mayor from 19
Crowther.
Yeah, 78. 78, I think.
Like, whoa.
Very interesting guy, has some really good stories about Orange City. Learned that the Stafford family was very good friends with him, so that was kind of cool, the ties in, in the city, you know? Had a good conversation with him, very, if you get to meet him, please do, it was really neat.
He still teaches karate.
He teaches karate next door, so I thought that was pretty neat. And then, I just wanted to remind everybody that July 17th, the Betsy Ross Airport unveiling. Um, I hope you all can come, because it's a big deal for the VIA also, First Women's Airport. And we have invited, um, some women from all over Florida to come and experience this with us. So, hope you all can make it, thank you.
All right, anyone else have anything?
Yeah, the, uh, July 4th was really, really good, and I always look forward to it. I go to two of them, one here and one somewhere else, and it's still fun. But, uh, yeah, it's funny, I was going to question about the unveiling with the Betsy Ross, because I got some confusing paperwork about it, and we're still on then, right?
9:00 AM.
Okay, on the 17th. That's it.
Mr. Tamsen?
All right, as, uh, you're a board member for TPO, the Transportation Planning Organization, just want to, uh, give you guys a little update. They're, FDOT's going through their, basically, the 35-year comprehensive plan. And just to put it, things in perspective, they've got a, a 16 total steering committees to try to figure out what we need, what our needs are for, I guess, in the 30 years. They're, you know, when you're driving and, and you're, you're cussing because of all this traffic and, and everything, I mean, they, they are, I have to say, hard at work trying to plan for, for smoother things, for, for better ways for us to commute and to try to clear up our roads. Along with that, uh, there's an initiative where, I guess, Volusia County was one of the counties that has a higher ratio of pedestrian and bicycle, um, accidents and fatalities, and I'm not going to deny that. Our sheriff got hit, uh, we had a pedestrian got hit by one of our unfortunate, oh, Mark Patrol vehicles, and, and he was found in the clear for that. But, they are working hard trying to figure out the things that we need to do to try to reduce bicycle and pedestrian fatalities. Uh, any ideas on that, you know, get with me or whatever, uh, attend a board meeting? And, uh, one point of interest is that, I guess, Becky will, will, uh, will, uh, confirm this, that we give FDOT a certain amount of money as, as a municipality to be part of, you know, all the planning and the improvements and all that. You know offhand how much that is every year, or maybe the city manager?
Are you talking about the, and for TPO renewal?
Yes.
Oh, oh, not TPO renewal, but, but what we give FDOT as a whole per capita as, as a, uh, or, or you don't have to give that amount, but I, I just want to, a point of interest is that the smallest municipality in Florida, if you guys know, is Marineland, Florida.
Oh, yeah.
With a population of 12. So, so, I just say that because, like, some entities pay $300,000 to FDOT to, to be part of the, the planning process. This municipality paid a dollar to, 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 but, um, with that, I'm going to say that they're not immune to, uh, to inflation, because they got assessed $2 for this year. Now, uh, I just want to piggyback with regard to the, the rain. Last time we, uh, we had a meeting here, had an occasion where I did drive industrial street, and I had a, an SUV, and I thought that my car was going to drown. So, I, I brought this, I brought this in the, uh, attention of, of Dale, and she was gracious enough to let me know that, you know, a lot, a lot is being done, a lot is being considered. And what I appreciate is seeing is that our worker were out there in the middle of the rain. Uh, Public Works was out there with a pickup truck, going back and forth, and I was watching them, uh, as your vice mayor, see what they're going to do, and I didn't know the pumps broke, and that, that attributed to all that water. I guess it wouldn't have been that bad if the pumps didn't break, but they quickly put up barrier, and they were at the parking lot of the post office, just going back and forth, trying to figure out what to do next. So, they were out there, and if something happens in the city, I just want to let you know, after-hours, police, fire, Public Works were out there trying to take care of issues. So, kudos to them. Funding fireworks, that was a great event. Uh, I was also a judge in the pie contest. I'd like, just like to say that we had one pie we had to disqualify because it wasn't refrigerated. So, if, if you're going to have a, a pie you're going to put in, and it's cold pie, bring a cooler. Because I, I was looking at them, going, I think I, I'm going to chance it and see what it tastes like. But due to health reasons, Matty said, no, we can't, we can't slice into the pie.
What kind of pie?
If, it was, it was a cold pie. But, uh, just want to say that, that our own, our own Jeremy won second place, uh, on that pie contest. I was also a judge for the, uh, for the watermelon contest, and there are some, that was a great event. That, that needs to be done next year again. We had the kind of, we had the kind of, um, we had the kind of, as far as the judging goes, just, 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 uh, just accordingly. But, uh, everybody had a good time, and the kids were excited, they had their, their little, uh, awards and, and trophies. And also, I'd like to thank the band, um, the Smoking Jackets, let me play, uh, two sets up there on drums. Uh, if you want to see me play, if you dig hard enough, you'll find it on YouTube. That's all I can say, it was, it was taped.
Rock and roll band here.
July 17th, I'd really like to see everybody out there for the dedication of the, uh, of the Betsy Ross Airport. It's an important, um, a part of history for Orange City, an all-female airport. Back when that wasn't, uh, that wasn't, uh, the, the usual thing. And, uh, I, I did have Matty send a letter to one of my, my constituents as a guest of honor, because he's the one that brought it up to me, and we both did the research on it. And I'm going to get up on the podium and do some, uh, history on, on what that's all about. It'd be great to hear, and I'm telling you, it's, uh, it's, it's a good thing. So, I hope to see everybody out there on July 17th. Thank you very much.
That's it.
All right, anyone else have anything? Mr. Propeller?
Thank you. July 9th, today. There are two former, uh, Orange City residents that would have celebrated their birthday today. One was, um, a mentor to me, and, uh, former Mayor Harley Strickland, July 9th. Coincidentally, my grandmother, Ann Lindsay, would be 102 today. She made it to 100, which, when she was that old, I really honestly believed that she just, would just keep going. Uh, both of those folks, um, lived a life of service to others. Ann Lindsay served in World War II, in the Women's Auxiliary Corps. At that time, they would not allow women to serve with men in the army, so hence the Women's Auxiliary Corps. She, a quick story to her, she joined to see the world. They stationed her in Georgia. She, uh, ended up being a military police officer, uh, at that time, and it was a secret, uh, where they had brought in prison for, uh, smuggled Germans they had brought over. So, she saw Georgia. July 9th. I appreciate the opportunity to serve this community, and I thank y'all, staff, council members, citizens who participate, be informed, be educated, participate. That is citizenry. Thank you.
Anyone else? You good? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?